Special meeting to order, roll call please.
Shawnee.
Here.
Here.
Osberg.
Here.
Hi.
Hi. And good morning, Tana.
So, I guess, just a kind of a thought. But I think maybe today what we should do is just focus on the budget that you handed out. Kind of, kind of sort of whatever the key changes, because we've kind of gotten a little bit sidetracked in a lot of these other things. We got the recommendations that were presented, and I would say.
Let's look at any of those dollar amounts that impact the budget. Kind of put those amounts in the budget so we have them, but we can discuss those later. I think that was kind of what you recommended, Tana.
Yeah, I mean, you guys have time, so.
I mean, that would be.
I concur.
My, my thinking, you know, all the recommendations, one of my thoughts was, you know, just really with our third-party vendors, we shouldn't be doing an RFP once every five years. So I think who we do that with and how we do it, and we don't want to do it just, I mean, I think it helps us reevaluate what we're doing and how we should be doing it. And then I think it's good for these things that are offered in public, we should at least open it up. Not that we need to change, but I think we should, you know, open that up. So, I mean, if we want to take that kind of off the table, I can make that motion now. Or if you want, maybe we can do it on twelve.
I'm fine with doing that now, if anybody else is. Do it a second.
A second.
To concentrate on the budget today, put the amounts in the budget for any of those recommendations.
Right.
And discuss those later.
Right. And then I think, I don't know if that's really a motion, that was more of a comment, but I think the motions would be that, that we do an RFP at least every five years on our third-party vendors. So I mean, there may be people other than that list that are recommended, and some of those people on the list, we may not want to do it, but I think we should just kind of have that.
That's all, that's your motion?
Yeah, so the motion would be that at least once every five years, we do an RFP for our third-party vendors. Do you want to start?
Start.
Old ones. Yeah, I mean, we'll just look at that, not do them all at once, but figure out a process.
Yep.
Jim?
No, I'm just. Yeah, just a second.
Dr. Pashani at the second, so roll.
Shawnee? Yes. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. So we've.
Yeah, well, I think, too, just, Tana, if you just want to walk through the revenue and the expenses kind of quickly, and then we can stop if there's a question.
Um, I guess there really isn't any big changes. What you guys have in front of you, um, kind of towards the top, I had put in like, on the very first page, I put the second reading changes and the third reading changes. I'm going to try and see if I can bring it up for you, which might be easier.
And what page did you say you were on, Tana?
It would be on the very first page.
All right.
I think we have a place to start.
So I guess as we scroll through, what's highlighted in green would be what we changed in the second reading. And so we added additional money for the aviation worker screening because Sean had received that budgeted amount. Some things that we've, that aren't here, that's what we've changed for this coming board meeting. We just increased the accounting services a little bit. And we split part of it between capital and accounting, and that would include whether or not you stayed with IBALE and balanced tax, or if you went internal, whatever you decided to do, it would be there.
Uh, Jay on Tana?
Eight.
Tana, we're trying to follow in this sheet that you gave us here.
Okay, um.
Eight of seventeen.
Maybe just hit it page by page.
Okay, let me see if I can just put the view here so we see the page numbers as well. So that would be like page six, but I'm not sure how their, how John has printed them out, or what your whole packet consists of.
What you got is page eight for us.
Okay. So on page eight then, for you guys, what, what we did was we added just a little bit more money to the accounting services line in the expenses. Um, and we put some of those accounting service dollars down in the capital fund, too, which you will see. Um, but if that way, if you decided to go internal, not internal, that money would be there. The only thing is if you went internal, the shift would be that that money would go towards the salary line and not the accounting services line. Another change that was made from the first reading was the security services. And we put two hundred and twenty dol- two hundred and twenty thousand in there. And that was just a change Sean had made based on information he had. Uh, the screening the aviation workers, we moved to a different line item. And so that amount had come down slightly. And then, and the other services, we added an additional twenty-nine thousand nine fifty-two, and that is for decom aviation consulting, that's the work that John DeCosta is doing. It's a contract that the board had approved back in twenty-twenty-three, and John has just recently started working on it, and so no billing will take place until twenty-twenty-six. Um, another one, just a little bit further down, is the repairs and maintenance, repairs and maintenance for a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Page ten.
Um, it would be page nine.
Ten.
Might not have the pages just because. Ours is page ten.
I think it would be page nine, because mine is page seven.
Ours says ten at the bottom.
Yeah, ours has ten. Not just, it's because of our page.
Yeah, yeah, no, just, just so we're all the same.
Take care, so.
Okay. And it should be highlighted like in orange for you there. A hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
We increased that by fifty thousand, and that was due to our arts amenities, uh, committee meeting that we sit on, because once like the immersive room and all of those rooms get up and running, there will be annual subscription fees. And so we added in fifty thousand for these subscription fees, and that's just a number we're guessing. We figure it's a good ballpark number, we could be high, we could be low. Um, let me just scroll here really quick. So now you guys would probably be like page eleven or so.
You just keep going, we'll tell you what page we're on.
Okay. Um, so we're on the energy page, the natural gas page. Um, highlighted in green, you'll just see we are essence, Excel won't provide us estimated usage for the energy and natural gas and electricity when the new terminal up is running. We're just estimating a fifty percent increase based on what we budgeted for twenty-twenty-five.
Excel for years has always given us an annual budget for gas and electric, they no longer do that, so it's the best estimate that we have.
That's good, I mean, it's going to be a change, it's hard to estimate what it is.
Um, any other changes from the first budget? That is all the changes we have made to the operating budget since the first time it was presented. So the net amount that we should be able to transfer to money market or to savings to be used um, to assist with capital projects should be right around four point four million. Um, as we go, well, excuse me, as we go into the capital fund.
Hey, Nick, Tana, we've, um. Our transfer to, uh, cap was three point nine million in twenty-five, or that's what we're anticipating.
We're anticipating, yeah, about three point nine in twenty-twenty-five.
And what was our budgeted amount there?
That is, that is our budgeted amount for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay. What I'm, I'm trying to get to is what's the, what are we seeing as the normal delta? That, uh, operating revenue versus operating expenses. We projected out historically through our cash flows with what numbers?
I'm sorry, I'm not quite understanding what you're asking.
Well, in twenty-four, what was our budgeted transfer and what was our actual?
So in twenty-twenty-four, we, uh, our net operating was two point one seven four. Is what we, is what we had. And that includes, that includes after the audit. So it's hard to say exactly what that number really was, because we do the GAUZ, the lease stuff we transfer out, we do asset relocation. And then we take some expenses that we are able to capitalize and we move those out. And so it's hard to say, give you an estimated number, like in twenty-twenty-three, we'd say it was twenty-five million. But that's because we took expenses and moved them over to capital. We still include the expenses, but we just moved them to assets, because both portions of the capital projects were completed.
Tana, I'm just trying, I'm trying to, you know, move up and, and, you know, what's our operating income, what are our operating expenses on a normalized basis? And what has our misspinn each year between budget and actual? And I, and so, you know, I just want to know, in twenty-four, were we projecting operating income of one million? We came in with two million or vice versa?
Yep, I see what you mean. Okay, so in twenty-twenty-four, your operating income was thirteen point nine, and is what you budgeted, we came in at fifteen million.
Good.
Um, I can tell you a big part of that was probably car rentals?
Yeah, I, I, at this point, we can drill down later, I just kind of want to see, when we're looking at our budgeting process, you know, how accurate have we been, what's, what's the delta each year? And that's where I just look at percentages to kind of get that in my head. And I know we have items that will spike or COVID or different things. So we were projecting in twenty-four, is it sodium and what?
You were projecting, you budgeted thirteen nine, thirteen point nine million, and you came in at fifteen point oh nine.
Okay, and then the expenses?
And the expenses you, let me get there. The expenses we, let's see here. Let me take this out here a minute. Uh, the expenses, I guess, we budgeted eleven million. And we came in, see, that's where we have.
There's going to be capital in there that.
Yeah, that was a little, in twenty-twenty-four, there were some extra ones, so we came in at sixteen. But we have an audit adjustment in there of like forty-two million.
Yeah, that'd be on the cap. What was the total expense projected was?
Projected was eleven point seven.
And what was actual?
Well, let me look at, I'll have to look it up in QuickBooks for you, it's a little.
Yeah, I mean, expenses is, as we're projecting on the eleven point seven, what did we come in on? Those same expenses in actual?
Yeah, let me look it up in QuickBooks for you, it's a little hard after the, like I said, after the auditors make their adjustments, because we need to put all accounts on this report.
But I, you know, kind of the bottom line is, we know what we budgeted for twenty-twenty-four for net income, what did we actually receive?
Yeah, I'll look it up here for you.
Get that in the future. Yep. So the only question I had on the, I guess, on the operating fund, uh, really one of the big components is employees. So what do you budget for salary adjustments and benefits? How does that change, can you?
Yep, I can share that with you, and Sean and Joan can probably speak to it more, but I do believe we have that in here. So we put in a four percent COLA plus two additional positions for airport ops prior to opening the expansion in the Skyway. And longevity pay is also included in there as well. So we're budgeting one point eight for the airport and, let's see, eight hundred and fifty for the fire.
And, Tana, you said longevity pay, so we've got step increases within each position, correct?
Yes.
And then our longevity pay is for those at the top of their plane, or is it in addition to?
Sean and Joan would have to speak to that portion, please.
It's in addition to it.
Correct.
So same, same as the city and what I emailed out.
Yep, five years, ten years, fifteen years, so much for each milestone.
So a guy down at the bottom might get step increase plus his COLA, or the guys at the very top only get COLA.
No, it's not COLA, it's addition to COLA.
Correct. And longevity pay is?
Long, longevity pay is just increase, it's like another step increases, not, not a full step.
Every five years, five, ten, fifteen, twenty, after twenty-five, after thirty.
So, Tana, just looking at this, so this, this salary section, I guess, I'm just kind of walking through that by section. So the total airport salaries is the two point two million, and then the fire is nine hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes, you are correct.
And then that second part would be benefits for, benefits for airport employees, six thirty-seven, for fires, three thirty-three.
Right.
So if we look at the top one on airport staff, it looks like we're going down seven percent from last year, from two point four to two point two.
Yep, you are correct.
And is that fewer positions, or maybe you can speak to that?
Yeah, it is. So we, we took out equipment operators, the, the two additional positions that are in here for late twenty-twenty-six before the new additions are, everything is completed, our custodians, basically. We don't have any airfield staff now, that we're, we're at full capacity there now, or at least the mechanic shows up when Monday, so.
And we're kind of feeling that with the new expansion recovered with that employee count?
We hope so.
Yeah.
I mean, we'll evaluate and see if we need to.
Find out.
Well, yeah, but I mean, that's, uh, I mean, that's kind of remarkable, that we're making this huge expansion and cutting this out.
Yeah, we probably wouldn't add, uh, full-time, we probably would start with some hard-time, some thirty-hour week people if we could find them to fill in.
What positions, Sean, are we chronically understaffed in? Always seems to be janitorial.
Uh, part-time janitorial, full-time, I think it has been pretty good. I mean, we go through a lot of iterations of, of applications, the mechanic was most difficult. Uh, we had someone, he declined, now we have another guy starting on Monday. Mechanics are very difficult, but I think we hopefully will have that. Airfield operators, equipment operators, not too difficult with that. It's the part-time custodial type things that are very difficult.
Way we looked at contracting custodial?
We've considered it for our east terminal building. In that building, the public areas there, that's possible. I know Ambassador was interested, but, uh, at this point, it's, so, two, three hours a day that we have staff that go over there and clean the public areas in the east terminal. And then our maintenance shops, they also clean the two, two buildings for the maintenance shop, that's about three hours a week. Customs, we clean customs as well.
Over the years, you know, the employment situation we've had, been hard to fill and easy to fill, different years, different times. Where are we at now? I mean, are we salary-wise and staff-wise, we're filling all our positions and we're not?
Yeah, like I say, Monday we'll do full staffing in the airfield when the mechanic joins us. But, you know, I, I think salary-wise, I mean, it's fine, back when the city and the airport put together that position evaluation committee, there was a, uh, compensation studies done for each position, we're due to have that done again. They recommended, we're just a little bit outside that window now. So through Pro resources, probably eighty K, so they can go out and do, you know, comp, comp study, we're, we're due for that, so.
Didn't we tag team with the city when they did theirs last time?
No, because the cities doesn't include airport information.
Well, but they have overlapping positions.
A few, yeah.
Well, no, I just, I, yeah, I, I feel, I mean, good job, Sean. Just want to make sure that we're, I mean, so generally, we're, we're not losing employees to other roles more or less than any other time.
No, not, not really, no. Some have retired, mostly our firefighters retired.
Right. Yeah, they're kind of set forever, I say, yeah.
Yeah, and our equipment operators, I mean, from time to time want to retire or maybe decide to do something different.
But it's not salary related, they're leaving.
They do that study, what, every five years? Well, that's what we should be doing now, we're just maybe a year outside of that window. Because I know the county does, we do every five years. Most of the airports are using eighty K, and then, uh, Airport Council International does an annual study as well, that has really good data. That'll be coming out next month there, that's people. So probably after the first year, that's something we can look at and bring back to the board as far as engaging with Pro resources and eighty K to do our comp study for the airport positions.
Sounds good. This budget includes the increase in health insurance?
Yes.
Yeah, that increase is picked up solely by the airport?
Correct.
By the employees? Is that kind of market that we're seeing right now, or?
I think so, I mean, the, the last year when we talked about it, the number of airports pay a hundred percent of health insurance. I mean, that's the rule that companies are going down, including the city and the county, they pick up a hundred percent of the premium. Uh, we're picking up the ten point zero one percent this year and leaving the employee share the same.
What's the accounting doing down?
The county has the, uh, our increase was four percent, and we have Blue Cross, same as the city and the airport. It went up four percent, but the employees pay a share, and families pay, we don't, it's not a hundred percent.
Yeah, what we're, we're proposing here is that the employees stay, if they're paying fifty dollars, they pay fifty dollars.
Yeah.
All right. That city's kind of in that same ballpark, so we don't have.
I believe so, yes.
Because I recall, we were having a discussion about heavy equipment operators, that we wanted to stay consistent with what the city was doing, so we weren't poaching employees back and forth.
What's confusing on that health insurance is, we all have the same carrier, but the city, two different people said it went up eighteen percent, another one says it's only ten percent, and our county's only went up four percent, and that we know for a fact.
Experience rates.
Right?
The loss.
It's experience rates.
You're a couple of heart attacks or back surgeries or something serious comes up.
Must be that healthy living program.
Healthy living program, yeah.
Um, I do have your number for twenty-twenty-four, uh, for the expenses. So, um, I had to take out the depreciation and the audit adjustments. So for twenty-twenty-four, we budgeted eleven point seven, and our expenses were ten point eight.
So we're a million under on expenses, two, two million over in revenue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we can go to the capital budget now.
So one, one quick thing on the fifty thousand that Tana's got budgeted for, um, for subscription fees. That's one thing that the Arts and Amities Committee is issuing an RFP on, and hopefully we'll have a corporate sponsor that will be able to pick up some of those expenses.
All right, so for the capital, this one is, it's honestly pretty straightforward. For the income, what I have budgeted for the income is what we are assuming we are going to get for the city-county property tax revenue, and then our federal and airport state grants. And that is based on project projections that Magal provides us.
Whole lot of, so, we don't receive county tax, do we?
Well, it comes through the county to the city, so.
But it's all taxed at the city.
Yeah, that's just the line item.
Yep, that's the two mil. The tax base is the city.
Correct. The county.
Right.
Really, city.
So the federal and state grants are based on, um, the cash forecast provided by the construction. And then we have the state leasehold tax and the foreign tax, which are pretty much set every year. Uh, the capital expense is exactly what's in the cash forecast, and that's working with, uh, with the contractors or Magal Construction has provided for their cash forecast, and also what Midhun have on their CIP plan. And so we just kind of, to the best of our ability, break out the expenses for that. However, I do have a blank spot in here for the monument sign. They don't have a dollar amount set on that. But I know Joan has provided me an email with the cost in there, so, um, I, I guess I just needed to follow up to make sure it's just one monument sign or two, or exactly what number I should take off those books, so.
So the monument sign is the existing sign that's there, changing out the logo to the new logo, and then there's the electronic sign. So there's two separate things that the committee's been working on. It's the monument sign that I think we're going to be ready to make a recommendation at the August twelfth meeting on the monument sign.
What, what line is that?
And Tana, which, that's in.
It's down at the bottom of sixteen.
Well, we should probably put a number in there, just as a placeholder, shouldn't we?
Yeah. Yeah, at the bottom of page sixteen, that orange is, is blank, and we'll have to get a number from Ali or Mark Sauer at Meaton Hunt of what that's going to be.
Okay.
Oh, the consultant to Meaton Hunt is, yeah, there'll be a number in there, I don't know what it is, um, do you remember?
I do not, I think they were going to present the final numbers on.
Yeah, it doesn't need to be exact here, but maybe by twelve, because that's what we're going to act on, that's right.
A hundred, yeah, I mean, a final twelve on the twelve, it's probably a hundred, I don't even know.
Well, we'll get it from that, yep.
And so based on, um. And so based on, um, the current expenses right now, we will be using close to thirteen million of our savings money.
Page three nine?
Uh, page sixteen, I think Paula had said.
Yeah, so what did you just say about the thirteen million?
Um, so that's up in the income category where it says additional money saving. So we will have to use about thirteen million from our savings account to fund the expenses in that capital account at this point. Because our grant money and the property tax money will not be enough to cover the expenses that we have planned.
Hannah, what's our cash balance after the thirteen million transfer?
Um, I can't tell you that offhand for twenty twenty-six, but I can tell you that in twenty twenty-seven is when we will need to be looking at funds. So we will still have good cash balances. Um, our cash daily balance should be well over the eight hundred days through twenty twenty-six. And then moving into twenty twenty-seven is when we are going to be needing about twenty-seven million as it fits right now with the projects on board. So at the end of twenty twenty-six, our cash balance should still be right around twenty million is what it's being estimated at, twenty to twenty-five million.
Chairman?
Yes.
I think this is really an important point that I think gets lost with the city. And we're going to spend forty-six million on capital construction next year. Cash we need is twelve million. Of that, the city is contributing two mills, which is one point seven. So they're really putting in about twelve percent of the cash that's needed for these capital projects. I just think that's an important point. That's where that, that's where the mills are going. They're going to capital projects, not operating money. And whenever we have a surplus, we're putting that into operate or we're putting that into capital expenditures going forward. And there's no way we would have been able to do terminal expansion or parking and what we've done if we hadn't built up those reserves over time. So I think that's the most important message that they need to understand. If we didn't have any mills, we wouldn't do these projects or we'd go to the city and say, we need twelve million bucks.
And another good point to keep in mind is this, we didn't have the mills as we're applying for the federal and state grants. They usually look and say what contributions are coming from your city. So if our city is not contributing any, the state and the federal are probably not as generous in what they're going to contribute as well. If there's no local support.
Tana, this takes into account the state cut us back fifteen million on those. Is that in here now?
I'm sorry, the forty-five million the state granted us is budgeted.
Okay, we had anticipated sixty. So, so we backed that fifteen out, correct?
Yes, yes.
That would have affected the cash balance. So we would add, because I think the question that was asked at the presentation of the city commission is, what is your cash? We weren't able to answer that. So I think we need to, we need to know what that number is at all times.
And I would if I were to have a QuickBooks in front of me or a bank statement or something, but yes, so, um, that is always important to know, but that is our cash at this time, but you have to look at what the cash forecast balances are after we take into all these projects and subtract out all of our expenses.
I disagree Hannah, but the, the point blank question that was asked is, you know, how much money do you have in your account today?
That's, that's a problem that was highlighted in your recommendation. I mean, we're a month and a half behind knowing exactly what our cash balances. So that's something that we need to have a better pulse on that.
Yeah.
Because of the additional outsourcing of the tax balance.
Yeah, we just need to figure that out so we know.
Yep, where it is. And then a- as we, you know, the cash balance continues to be critical. As we look at this, this is again based on fifty percent of our grant requests or where are we?
For the budget, is that what you're asking?
She could have spoken up when she couldn't answer this question.
So on the one point seven million, so Paula and I got an email from the mayor requesting consideration to reduce our request by five hundred thousand. Uh, he's aware of this meeting today. What's the response going to be?
Nope. Let's, let's go back here for a second.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
So Tana, you were looking at what our projections are based on?
So you're asking me like what our cash balances are based on what's in our forecast and stuff right now? Is that what?
As we look at our capital budget going forward in twenty-six, what are we anticipating our success rate on our grants? Is that the fifty percent we're using or?
So the budget right now does not, the budget right now has all of the grant monies that we are anticipating, yes. There's only a couple of grants that are out there right now. Um, for the terminal project that have yet to be approved. Um, and then we do factor in all of our guaranteed grants, like our A I P and our A I G funds that we know we are going to get.
Our competitive grants, I, I thought in our forecast, we were fifty percent success.
Yes, and right, and right now, we don't. It's based on the grants that we have applied for. This budget is based on the grants that we have applied for and we know the monies that are going to come in for it.
What grants have we applied for that we don't know? Are the, you know, I, I'm trying to get a feel here because a- as we build, you know, we're eventually going to have to borrow money. So what, what are we anticipating? Are there grants in pulling down this cash balance to twenty million? Could that be impacted by other grants received? Showing those just at zero.
So I will pull it up for you at my ticket again.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think what we want to know is, and I think you said it in twenty twenty-seven, if we get the grants we're anticipating, we'll have a twenty million dollar balance.
Right.
And I think, I think this is probably the core of how you want to respond to the mayor as well. Is in twenty twenty-six, we're anticipating spending forty-six million dollars on capital approvals. Of that, we need thirteen million cash. And we're asking you to continue the two mills at one point seven of that thirteen.
Right.
And, you know, we'd be happy to meet with them or go over that or do whatever, but that's, you know, that's what we're asking for. Twenty twenty-six, we have forty-six million dollars in capital construction. And we need thirteen million in cash. And we're asking them to come up with a fraction of that.
So the two competitive grants that are left for the terminal project are a six million dollar grant through the A T P program for the boarding bridges and heating cooling. We may know if there will be an amendment to the twenty twenty-five grant or another grant thirty-four October first. Or we will apply for a grant for the next round of the A T P, the six million there. The second one is four million for the second phase of the apron reconstruction. We can't apply for that grant until the November council.
So there's ten million in outstanding grants.
Competitive grants.
Were, were, are those included in the revenue here?
Uh, I don't know that you have included those, Tana, have you?
Um, let me double check. I believe the six million is, let me see where the six million would fall here.
Like that.
Those two are finished, we're, we're done with the terminal project competitive grant request. The other grants we're getting, we're getting regardless if anyone's going to do anything through A I G or our entitlements, those are coming. Nobody else do anything to get those.
Yes, the six and the four are both included in the twenty twenty-six. Um, only for the fact, no, the four million is not until twenty twenty-seven, but the six million is included in this.
That, that's a competitive.
If we get the six, it's not going to change.
Six million.
And we'll have twenty million in reserve. And then if we, you know, get the four, we're going to spend the four. Right, that'll be in twenty-seventh's budget.
Right, the four million is in twenty-seventh's budget, because we don't get it approved till October or so.
Yeah, the, the timing of it, it's, it's different. So when we talk the grant for next year, so we're in the government fiscal year in our calendar here, so. Of twenty twenty-six is twenty twenty-seven for the government for us, yeah.
Well, we just need the high level.
Right, right.
I mean, it's, but the six million is included in the twenty-six proposed budget. So it's accurate to say we need to come up with thirteen million dollars cash for these projects. And we're asking the city for one point seven.
Correct.
That includes, we're, we're also forecasting like four and a half million moving from operations into this number of them.
Yes, when we do the forecast out, um.
So the, the twelve point nine includes the four point five carryover from the end of the year.
Yeah, it, it does. It isn't spelled out in the sheet that you have, but when the forecast is all put into the balance sheet, yes, the four million does get included in the money, the money to use for capital funding, yes.
And, and the balance there, then it's the twenty in cash, correct?
It says twenty-five and I, I always hate to do twenty-five because like I said, that six million is in there right now. So if we back that six million out, we're about twenty million in cash, yes. For twenty twenty-six.
You confused me there. The six million again, it's where?
Well, that six million right now, we're assuming we're going to get. I mean, we think we have a really good chance of getting it and it's in the twenty twenty-six budget.
Okay, it's in the, in the capital revenue for.
Yes, so if we don't get that, I mean, where I show right now is we're going to be at around twenty-five point six million.
Okay, so.
If we don't get that six million, we're at about twenty million.
Okay, you're crossing over there. There's thirteen million coming out of savings.
Yes.
If we don't get the six million, that would be seven million or nineteen, or eight, nineteen million.
It'll be nineteen million. We'd have to take that money from our savings.
And which would draw down the cash balance.
Correct.
Okay, but this, if we get the full six, sixteen, we'll be looking at thirteen million drawdown in cash. A twenty million dollar balance. And, and I know everybody keeps going back to the eight hundred days, but we've never really set that as a policy. We.
Right, right, agree. And it still isn't a policy. I just kind of use that, um, as the borderline to know when we need to start looking. When are we going to hit that eight hundred days? Because at that point, we're going to have to have had conversations about additional funding at that point. So it's just kind of like my red flag day.
No, at, at, at some point, we have to go to the city and talk about bond.
Yes.
Anyway, just to recap this in my mind, so I'm clear. For the forty-six million in construction projects, they really need, we need to have one point seven plus twelve point nine. We need to come up with fourteen point six million. And of that, we're asking the city to come up with one point seven. And if that all plays out, at the end of the day, we'll have twenty million in reserve. Which is probably the fullest reserve we've had in the decade. And I don't disagree that we need to figure out what's an appropriate reserve. I think that's really to be done after you get all this construction done and what kind of revenue we're going to get from our parking.
That, that was a high level summation they were looking for.
I know you're on a tight time budget here, Madam Chairman, so I think I don't have any other questions on this budget.
I have a quick question. Uh, Tana, does, does this reflect the, um, one point zero eight million in restaurant funding by Skydine?
Because that won't come in until everything is open now for operations. That's like a twenty twenty-seven, yeah, so.
Okay, and then.
So then that would reflect in the operating budget when that does begin.
The date of that is uncertain.
Okay, and then I, I thought that Sean, you said there was, but the, I might be getting confused between the monument sign and the electronic sign. So the monument sign is the one that goes on the landscape feature.
That's my understanding.
Electronic sign is in there?
I'm sorry?
Electronic sign is in.
Exactly, or that was not filtered. The terminology that Raleigh uses. I think it's, yeah, the terminology that the consultant uses is monument sign, which is. We're doing the existing sign that's there today.
Oh, yeah.
And then the electronic sign.
Okay, and then, um, did you say that the monument sign might be under Magal?
They talked about possibly doing another, but I think in talking with Joel Casper, the cruise is easier if that is handled separately by the airport. So it's not included in costs that we have to go through and take out for F A A closeouts and reimbursements. I think it's just easier if we, because it's not eligible. So I think it's just easier if we do that as a separate contractor, just be built separately.
And basically the monument sign is just changing the logo, right? Pretty much.
Yeah, it takes.
Changing the logo from what it is now to the new logo.
Actually, we went out and inspected that sign and it's, um, definitely shown its age. It's, so what Raleigh was proposing was a sign that would sit on top of the current monument landscaping.
So what the after logo is in the letters, that's all on a big plastic thing that all comes off and they put it going on.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just for clarification, the monument sign that's there is, is what's there today. The electronic sign is something separate.
Yes.
And one more, I should have shut up, but I've been getting some pushback on going from four to six percent cents on the fuel flowage. And I wonder if we should maybe just bump that a penny rather than a fifty percent increase.
Two cents would, if based on twenty twenty, would generate ninety-six thousand additional revenue. If we had six cents in twenty twenty-four, it would be ninety-six thousand more.
We, we haven't changed it for a long time, have we?
Couple of years, I think.
Was it three cents before?
Two cents, and then went to four. And the goal was to get it to eight, so.
Let's maybe just, I'm just, we don't need to discuss that, but maybe we can get me up to speed on that. I think we would know what that history is and I think having a increase would be good, but.
Two cents from the nineteen seventies until we changed it to four just a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
If it's five cents, that's fine too.
Yeah.
I haven't heard any pushback, but if they are, they haven't called me, so.
A little pushback is coming.
But, uh, I mean, five is, my, my goal is to have it on the agenda for August twelfth for approval. But, uh, if it's five cents, I mean, that, we can do that.
Yes.
Are you ready for a motion to approve?
I think we'll do this in August, won't we? Or August eleventh meeting?
Yeah, okay.
So the only other change you'll notice to the budget then, when it is in your board packet, will just be for that monument sign and the capital expenses. We will put a dollar amount to that, which will increase the money by the required from our savings account by the same amount. So that should be the only change that you will see in the board packet.
Tana, I would just suggest we do a placeholder for the potential other changes there. CFO position, human resources, uh, if we just put a dollar amount in there, we just amend.
Yes, I can do it however you want. Right now, there's, um, additional funds in the accounting services line. That would include ideally balance tax how it is now. Um, if you guys decided to do something internal, really, the operating budget wouldn't change, but those expenses would shift from accounting services to salaried employees. but those expenses would shift from accounting services to salaried employees. So I can do it on whichever line item you prefer.
I think it's fine the way you've done it.
Yeah.
I have one question, Madam Chair. Is the airport saddled with this 3% cap?
Yeah, ultimately, it will stop it.
Okay.
Well, that's a really good question, Jim, because.
It is.
I don't know if we are or not, because we're authorized up for a mill. And that's not part of the cap according to how I understood. My understanding is the city could change that for mills and it'd be separate from.
Yeah, the, the Aeronautics Commission and Airport Association are looking into that. Because the Century Code, there's a lot of cleanup language that needs to take place in the next session, talking about mills. That's to be determined, so we could be still talking mills for the airports. There's no clarity on that right now from legislative council.
The legislature doesn't even know about it.
Oh, there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, Greg Steeman and Steve Swantek, we're going to look into that with legislative council, of course. So before we go, there's just one other non-related thing. But in our South GA, we've got two areas of asphalt parking lot that are completely disintegrated. A lot of it because of heavy truck traffic. There's been some storms, road collapses and so forth. So we got bids from three different contractors. So border states paving will be over there just resurfacing and digging out some of those sinkholes. It's about 80,000 to fix it, but we can't go through the winter without doing some maintenance on that. So some of it's around the group six area, some others are by some different areas.
Is it construction related or?
It's just traffic all the time. I think this asphalt was put in probably in the 70s.
That's not inside the fence, that's outside the fence.
Yeah, so it's a maintenance thing, but it's going to be a big item. They're, they're ready to get started on that here from soon.
The other, the other items the city will need to touch on is special assessments.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And what, here's where we are. You know, like it or not. We have been special assessed 3,952,293 dollars and 75 cents.
Is that as of today?
Yeah, yeah, okay. It's a 257,000 dollar yearly payment. It's now their proposed, the proposed special is another 1.4 million, 1.3 million, and another 54,000. And sent a memo that the issue being state law requires when they do improvements, that they be proportionately distributed along the benefit of property, requires benefit. That's what these numbers are. FAA's airport revenue can only be applied to these specials. If 50% or more of traffic from the infrastructure is airport customers, which we need to solve this between FAA and the city. This concept of first deferring special assessments, there, there were some minor special assessments, 40, 50,000 dollars. The deferral seemed like kick the can down the road to deal with it. But in 2023, that, that's where this thing jumped to a $3 million assessment. In 2025, it's another 1.3 million. From the city's standpoint, the city does the improvements. They then bond, they borrow money to pay for them. And they special assess the properties that are benefited to make the payments on their bonds. When we don't, when we defer this 257, this puts pressure on the city to take money out of their cash to pay it. And so somehow we have to reconcile either at the state level or at the federal level, how we do this. The one thought I had in looking at this is they talk airport revenue. What is airport revenue? And are there ways to pay it? And are other airports finding a way to pay this with non-FAA airport revenue? But this problem, the, the solution that's we're operating under now just continues to ring up this million, you know, 4 million dollars and ring up interest each year. It's, it's not solving anybody's problem.
Do you have copies of that?
I can.
John?
Yeah, yeah, you can see it in the memo they sent. I mean, it's a nationwide problem. It's also, it's a whole.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think to John's point, again, I know we're out of time here, but I think we should try and figure out a common agreement here in the short term. I think that would help the city. We'd be doing something to make.
I mean, the city's asking the question, saying, hey, we're going to kick two mills to you, 1.7 million dollars. You owe us now as of 25, 4 million. This isn't the city saying you owe us. This is the state law with special assessments and our levies. We may have to, you know, kick this to the feds or to the state with that. Or are there other revenue sources outside of what FAA controls in their grants? And, and I do think there are those type of revenues.
Well, I think at a high level, if I understand the situation, what the FAA does not want to do is have specials attached to the flyaway, the runways, places that are, they've paid for 100% and there's really no benefit for the runway and the flyaway. And so I think part of it, in my mind, it's two things. I mean, if I'm people that are renting space, they're paying the specials. I mean, farmland that's out of that fly, fly lane should be paying the specials. So I think from my perspective, it's the city recalculating the specials in a different way for the airport. Still to pay the full amount, reallocate it different. So I think we should have that discussion. I think we should reach an agreement with the city in the next, you know, couple of weeks. And whatever amount we pay them, I think we should start paying on that. And then if it's resolved and we owe more or we owe less or whatever, but this is not going to be resolved by the FAA in the next two years.
Yes, very cautious if we pay anything and the FAA comes back and determines that we violated the policy, all our federal grants are locked.
Right, and we're not going to do that, but I mean, we're not going to.
That's what the consequences are, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
What are, what are the other sources? What, do we have any revenue that is not considered airport revenue by FAA?
I mean, this is the same conversations we've had for the first deferral when Mark Schrader was involved. They consider the levy money, airport revenue, everything, every penny.
No, no, the operations, FAA.
Every parking revenue.
Parking revenue is airport revenue. There is no, it's airport.
That, that's the definitional part that I think we need to, to get into. Is the mill, is the mill levy considered airport revenue?
That's what they consider, yes, because this came up before. This isn't old.
No, no.
Well, it's not going to be.
They can assess the tenants and Dave Durkin and I spoke for quite a while on Monday. I mean, the tenants can, they can move forward and special assess the tenants.
I think they are now.
I haven't seen it in writing yet, but they can.
Well, we just need to not just say, no, we don't, we seriously do this. We end up being under protest or pain and saying this is subject to FAA or whatever.
Well, and again, Sean, the information you sent out was summarizing solutions that have been put in place. These are not hard and fast policies. I think we have to be careful. FAA won't allow this, actually. Here's some guidance of other situations. When I read those, it, I, I can see the situation with the airports. You can't go and build something and special assess it 100% to the airport. Yeah, and we aren't going to stand for that. And, and I understand that, but state law, you know, lays out the formula for how you special assess, what you do with it. And so the city's got to deal with state law. We have to deal with FAA. But there is no hard and fast policy. There's been rulings on individual cases. And, and I think we owe it to the city to say, hey, yeah, especially now when special assessments, property taxes are under, under the gun and we're sitting here withholding a quarter million payment for whatever reason. And we can have all the good reasons, but the city's saying, you owe us 4 million dollars. You should be paying a quarter million a year and you're paying nothing. We're actually, you're actually taking money from the general fund of the city where they're trying to get under their 3%.
So that memo was received from Mark Schrader last Thursday. I was with Tom Shower. We were at the airports conference. Tom was with the FAA for almost 34 years. That's the first time he's seen in writing the 50% language. And Tom dealt with this with all other airports in North Dakota, South Dakota.
Well, and, you know, we, well, the city, I know the cities have to size aside money to pay the city's share of special assessments. And maybe we have to do that when the airport share of special assessments identifies money. What is, how can we get to it?
As the FAA approves it.
Again, that, you know, on, on the other side of this, this isn't the city trying to, you know, beat up on the airport. This is the city doing. And so, but they've got a good point when we're asking for two mills and they're saying, you owe us 4 million. You should be paying a quarter million a year and crickets.
And I, back to Rex's point, I think that, that does, it is valid to say, can we, we are lease, I mean, we are a landowner and we lease some of the land, so maybe if it was adjusted the way that we.
They can, they can assess the tenants. So they can cover some of that.
Good conversation to have and to work with. Is there a directive?
The FAA, I don't know what compliance officer, but come on, Tana, you dealt with this in Grand Forest.
Well, I would say if you get that copy out, I'm willing to, you know, talk with the mayor over that with him. You know, Sean, you and I can maybe meet with them or you and I and John or whatever, but.
I know the city engineer and the special assessment coordinator are meeting with Susan, Mike, Redlinger, her brother. To brief them on it.
Well, we just need to show some good faith, understanding of what their issue is.
I agree.
All right, good meeting.
Motion, Chair?
A little second.
Thank you, everyone.